About four minutes till, three minutes till we go ahead and get started with this thing. Um, as you know, everybody's been coming to town all meetings. These informa- these meetings are for information and like asking questions to get information between the board meetings and some of us clarify what was going on at the board meeting. Usually I clear it up on Thursday. I know there's people that doesn't want me to have the town hall meetings and that's okay. I said it as a campaign promise that I would have a camp- that I would have them. I don't care if there's one person here. I'm still gonna have the town hall meetings because there may be something, a question need to be asked and they wanna know about. I will say that it's not gonna come out today. I won't talk about it today. But I do have the report for the audit and I will tell infor- information on that uh, at the Tuesday morning board meeting. Um, and the changes there. Uh, let's see. They still, we're gonna talk about the roof still next month, right?
Next month or beginning of November.
Okay.
Hopefully sooner than that.
Okay, there's gonna be a roof on the clubhouse and of course, the question is, most people ask, we're gonna close clubhouse or pool. It's basically gonna be like maybe one or hour, two hours or something, up to about four hours in a day, right?
Yeah, it might be a morning or an afternoon. All depends on where they're, where they're at, on, on the side by the pool here and, and the side over here and at the entrance. So, uh, all depends on, on that any given day or what's going on.
Okay, and so far, he's been fence, been painting a fence around tennis courts? They're gonna resurface them when?
Uh, at probably, uh, beginning, end, end of November, beginning of December.
Okay, at the begin, at the end of November, beginning of December. Also, uh, Billy is about done mowing the ponds, the retention ponds. Then when he gets done with that, we're gonna work on this out here. Uh, I think he's gonna start on that next week or the week after making this first, making the first row like golf carts. Let's see, as far as the, as you know, we've painted the line going down the center of Country Club. We have the advisory committee looking at the speeding issue. They've not, they've started on it. It'll be a little while before they get recommendation there. And of course, it's not costing anything to do that. They're seeing what other communities do. Do to like get people to slow down. Maybe an idea of like, I think Sandy brought up my idea one time, putting a dummy bike in the car. You know, anything they're gonna come up with, they're gonna check to see if it's legal here anyway. Let's see, RV compound, I can talk about it a little bit. Uh, we're gonna have two, we're gonna have a, a committee meeting next month. Uh, I don't know exactly what day yet. It's gonna be October the ninth, I'm assuming. I think it's right. And then it's gonna be a walkthrough. I don't know which, if it's gonna be the other way around or not. But, um, we, I think we're gonna have like a few spaces that are empty, but they're going to be the small ones that are like ten foot. The ones that got the landscaping trailers in, in those types. It's gonna be around the forty number and around the one hundred number. That's where they're set.
Is he having an October night?
I don't know, I don't know exact date on that.
That's a Saturday.
Okay, it's gonna, I, I know it's, there's gonna be a, a annual meeting and also a, um, a walkthrough. Let's see, I'll meet with the, um, advisory committee tomorrow morning, the health committee to look at the numbers about making it, changing it back to like optional if you've been vaccinated, you can wear a mask or not wear a mask. We'll find it out in the morning about ten o'clock. Right now is, uh, today. What's your phone got? What, COVID now? Okay, what is it?
I'll tell you in a minute.
I think mine said this morning on the CDC guidelines, I think it was like eleven, gone up, gone down like eleven or twelve points since, uh, we put this thing in place, so making a decision on that. Okay, I'll look, I'll look it up on mine real quick.
Mine's got ten point nine. It's down our, uh...
Yeah, it's gone, it's gone down about, about eleven or twelve points since we simply put this in place mandatory.
We started at twenty-five?
No, we started at twenty-two, close to twenty-two, something like, yep.
Yeah, it's sort of about twelve points down, so hopefully tomorrow, hopefully tomorrow I'll be down below, below ten percent, so that's good.
Um...
That's a positive test for you.
Let's see, I'm trying to think of what else we got, what else we got going on? You can answer that question, I'll give it to Gil. What else you think you've got going on that need to know about? You're looking at me like you wanna say something, so, alright.
You want some community, you want some community events?
Yeah, tell me about some community events going on right now, what you got?
Well, um, Bingo's starting, uh, on the fifteenth of October. That's a good thing. Uh, it'll be starting to generate some money for us. Um, Monday Night Entertainment will start this Monday night coming up, okay? Uh, we have the board meeting the following, following morning. Um, and then a week after that on Thursday, the second Thursday of the month, we have the first uh, Thursday entertainment show that we haven't had here in a year and a half. So, both of those shows are, are gonna be seated. Um, the Monday night show is gonna be tables and chairs like normal and the other, the other setup will be the same setup, theater seating. Um, and, um, so we'll try our best to keep everything sanitized in the clubhouse here and things of that nature. Bathrooms, uh, like, like normal, uh, you know, you can eat off the floor. So, um, uh, at this point, I'd just like to try and welcome all the snowbirds coming back uh, to enjoy the shows and the facilities, uh, and try and get back to somewhat, uh, as a, as a semi-normal. How's that? I'm, I'm kinda excited about that, so.
Okay, um, if you guys got any question about anything, uh, like I said, I do have the audit, but I'm not gonna go over it today. It's gonna be, the figures are gonna be announced on Tuesday, so, there's still some things I wanna check out on this thing first. So, uh, has anybody got any question out there? Yes, Tony, you got a question for us? Okay, come on in here and act, tell me about, tell us what's going on about the news and views. That'd be a good thing.
The news and views. Um, October's gonna be just a few days late, um, because we had to get the budget in. Um, and it's right in the front of the book, so hopefully everybody will enjoy what they see. Um, we're still working a little bit tweaking the news and views, I don't mean, how am I that? We're still tweaking on the news and views a little bit, so if anyone has any suggestions, um, bad or good, bring them to me and we'll look at them, okay? And I'm doing billing today.
Okay, uh, explain how much money's come in so far for that. Even though I know some of it's going to pay for the paper.
So far, the, the month of August, we collected, I don't remember, but the month of September, I've collected thirteen thousand dollars has come in. I don't remember what August was. But some of that pays for like six months or a year. That doesn't mean everybody, you know, has sent in their check. Some people pay every other month and so I'm billing today, but, um, some of them have paid for the whole year, which is good. And some of them pay for six months at a time 'cause they get a little five dollar discount if they pay six months or a year. So that's an incentive for them to pay a larger amount at one time.
Okay, and what time is the, what date is the deadline on for next, for the month, November?
To get articles in?
Yes.
Um, uh, what's, what is Friday the? It'll be the, it'll be the first, first Friday in November, and I don't have a calendar with me here.
So that's next, that's next Friday, right?
Next week, yes. I need all articles because November's a holiday. We have a holiday at the end of the month. So, the, um, it'll take a little extra time to get the news and views in and printed as well. It'll be that way again in December. It'll be a little earlier in the month.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am? What, what is the average every month? Of, of what I would bill straight through would be between nine and ten thousand dollars. Then it costs us right at five thousand dollars to get it printed. Like this month, it'll be a little more because we have extra pages for the budget. When we have to put in the budget or the resumes for board members, then we have to have extra pages and that costs us a little more money, okay? But I, what I like about it-
Five months or like that, right?
Do what?
Four or five months or whatever.
Yes, yeah. And what I like about it is it's right here close. It's with Print Shack up in the shopping center next to Bell's Outlet. Fantastic lady to work with. Um, she and I have worked together and, uh, I think she's doing a great job. I mean, she, she calls me, we work, whatever is wrong, we work it out, or we call the person who has the add if we need to make a little change, so she, they're great to work with, plus it's close. So, you know, we can do things at the last minute, okay?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. That's not what I came in here for.
That's okay. As you know, after hearing that, she's gonna bill him like nine, eight to nine thousand dollars a month. You know, we're gonna make three, roughly somewhere around three thousand dollars a month on it instead of what it used to be was like a thousand dollars a year. So just keep that in mind. Okay, um, if you guys got any questions about anything, uh, let's see, I'm trying to think of what else. Um, after they do the parking lot here, make the first row, uh, like a handicap only, I mean, not handicap, uh, dog park only. You're gonna see them taking trees down out here next to the tennis court, so, um... Go ahead, anybody's got a question, go ahead and ask, ask about it. Okay, right here.
Hi Jerry, I'm Roger Logan from Uniform. I would, uh, I'm not trying to bring up any old wounds, I just wanted some information on the lawsuits that are still going on. I know when you campaigned a year ago, you would come to these town hall meetings and bring pamphlets and, and all kinds of, uh, information on those lawsuits.
Right.
But I haven't heard anything that's going on since you've been president.
Okay, they've, um, as far as the lawsuits go right now, I know that, that nothing new has happened with one of them uh, since last year. And the other one is they're, we're waiting for one of the other parties to like, uh, be decided what, how much money they owe and that kind of thing. So we're not out of those yet. And I will say one thing about this, that when I said they were, there was lawsuits against the BCPO, which I said they were in note in December. What I meant was not those going against that particular board. It does carry on from board to board. It does not say they started it, it was against them, because I knew if I was elected to the board, then I would inherit those lawsuits or this board would inherit those lawsuits. So we're gonna have to make a decision on those. So that's where we're at. And that's, and another reason I wanna make it because nothing's been said is because really so far, nothing's really been, you know, really been done about it. So that's why there's no, a really update on it.
Is it costing us money with attorneys still? How much are they, we spending monthly or quarterly or whatever for the attorneys?
Uh, let's see, I think I've found the answer to that. If I can, I'll get back with you on it.
And while he's, while he's, uh, looking that information up, there are some things that we can't discuss because they are, you know, attorney, uh, uh, person privilege. So there are some things that we can't discuss, but I know that they're active.
I know, I know what I've been told so far from looking at the figure, the figure was, was me and, I think, uh, me and Gil both was told that we, we did not spend money on attorneys unless absolutely necessary. Cause they were like stunned that they, I think Carol was stunned that we, uh, we had spent hardly no money on attorneys. Uh, let's see.
The other thing while he's waiting, if we win the lawsuit, which many cases we do, the other party is responsible for paying back the fees. So we might be, we might spend five thousand dollars, but the other party will eventually have to pay that back. And that come, and that is put in a different line, so it looks like we've spent all this money and not gotten anything back, but we do. So I'm just waiting for him to...
Okay, I'll see a figure here of... I gotta find the ones most of the date.
The lawsuits are, um, residents that felt that they, that they weren't fairly treated, uh, and they usually about, uh, foreclosures and things like that, yep. Then, any frivolous ones, our attorney can usually get them taken off. And many of the lawsuits are just, uh, when they, when they go into it and they start there, looking at everything in the depositions, they realize that they don't have a case. Sometimes they do. Most of the time, eighty percent of the time, they don't, but, but...
Well, a lot of times, these lawsuits are not like, uh, we, we're calling them, they're calling us and wanting to like attorney sit up, uh, a conference call or something like that. It's like where somebody's like, and a great example is that, I can say this when I think, uh, a lady sued Brookridge, she fell in her own house. But because we were privately owned, she, she just didn't have a case against us. But that's where one was when, of course, you, they sue it and then the attorney contacts us and they talk to our attorney. And then because they representing us, they send the bill to us for whatever it might be. Usually it's less when you have a telephone conference call instead of a, um, email, putting together an email. I think I've seen a figure of three, of three thousand dollars and that was for like six months. So, that was not like, um, one call or... Make sure I get this right. I don't usually keep those out except for... Okay, I'm looking at the one for Becker. And this was... This was averaging about, I look at the numbers over here, I see one thousand, I see six hundred, I see one seventy-five, I see seventy-four, I see two hundred, I see three dollars, I see eight dollars, I see five dollars. I see one, I see one for three dollars. It's just, and that's based on a six, eight month period, so it looks like about four thousand dollars total. It's about what that would be, and that's based on July through March of this year. Um, and I'll look over here at the other one, cause they had, remember they had two attorneys. The other one's called Peyton, Peyton Bowles.
Peyton Bowles.
And let's see, it's right here. It shows that, uh, back in July last year, they spent twelve hundred dollars. October, I mean, uh, August, they spent five hundred dollars. September, three thousand nine hundred dollars. So, October, they spent twenty-seven, twenty-five. And then November is like seventeen hundred. It looks like January, they spent twenty-six hundred and fifty bucks. And February, they spent one thousand. In March, four weeks took off, so they were, they spent four hundred and seventy-five. So, um, so it really depends on like, I don't call them unless it's something we absolutely need to know about. Post time, um, I will say we have a little group here that wants to like... Well, sometimes-
I just-
People cause us to look, cause us, cause attorney, call attorney when it's not really needed, but anyway. That's, that's the best I can answer on that question right now. I'm sorry, that's kinda, kinda seems like, um, it's not the, uh, only answer. I don't have anything past, um, I asked you to lie this year.
Trying to get there, Jerry?
What's that?
Yeah, I got a question down here. Um, question, if we lose, do we pay the other party's fees and all the other court costs?
Yeah, that's usually why it happens. We pay the other, other party's fees. Usually if they sue, sue to get fees and stuff. Okay, anybody else got a question on? Alright, go ahead, right here.
Yeah, Gil, I'm in, uh, Ford. Yeah, I, I got two people that I've known was involved with selling homes in the park here in the past two months. And they go to closing, like one of them went to closing yesterday and they didn't even have a background check done or the stabo fees paid. So all of a sudden, uh, people are getting upset with the process. So what is the process?
Well, I should, okay, they've sold the house?
Yes, on their own. They, they-
Oh, okay, so the people that was, they sold the house to was supposed to come get a background check before they even like closed on it. So, yeah.
What happened is who actually leases that or how's that work? Because when they went to, these people came from South Dakota that was buying the house, they were closing at four o'clock yesterday afternoon and because the stabo fees weren't paid, no background check, they couldn't close.
Okay, normally that would fall on the homeowner, cause it's buy, it was sold by owner. The homeowner should've told them upfront, they need to get a background check, uh, to move in here.
Yeah, but the homeowner that sold it don't live here. She just inherited the place. So what's happened is all of a sudden, this process is going through and how's that going through the cracks until the last minute? I mean, this is something that I've heard on, in two different, uh, two different places. Uh, one of them was done with a Realtor that was not from the area and was not aware of this. So at the closing, here we are.
Okay, in my personal opinion, it would still fall on the, the owner because they should've told them they had a background, to get a background check in here. But I'll check on that. That's one needs, needs to be checked on.
Okay, thanks.
Alright, we got a question on Becker. Alright.
Okay, I just wanna, I, I just wanna, um, say one more thing about when Jerry was giving you the, uh, attorneys, the attorney information. The attorney from, um, Mezur and Becker was all litigation. That was strictly litigation for Brookridge. The in, the, the attorney's fees, which I think Jerry, did they add like ten thousand dollars for Peyton Bowlen? And they were not for litigation, they were for other questions that that board had.
Yeah, it looks like you got like three, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven. And you got roughly about fourteen thousand. That's probably just questions they ask the second attorney.
And if I could just, uh, Gil, you brought up an interesting, uh, an interesting problem that is had. Usually the only way that Brookridge finds out is when they come down to get their barcode. And, or if somebody tells, tells somebody like Jerry or goes to code enforcement and then Captain Schubert would go right out there and speak with them. And I don't know if legally there's something that can be, yeah, if the, if the owner... If the owner does not give them all of the information that they're supposed to, then is there a legal, I believe that there's a legal retaliation against the owner and they could probably get their money back. But usually when they go for the barcodes, that's when we usually find out.
But if you see the sign to, to sell by owner, couldn't we, uh, of course, would provide all that? Could they check on that to make sure that they probably wouldn't?
Well, that's something that Jerry, I think that's one of the things, oh, we have Spence.
That would be a, that would be a good thing for, uh, for someone to look into to look at, look at the process and how it goes and really iron out and try and define, well, who does what and who, and who gets notified when. So, people don't buy a house, get it in the property, try to go through the gate, get a barcode, say they're tonight because they don't have no background check. So that would, you know, that's going to the seller of the house, okay, like a brand new house, like Acme or anything like that, they would say, this is what you need to do, you can come by the house, you need to have this, 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 this before we, you know, before you even go, go forward. The same thing with the Realtors. I mean, we pass this, all, all this information on to the Realtors, you need, this is what you need to do before you even think about moving to Brookridge. And, uh, that would be the pro, it's all about the process and how this gets done.
Well, I will say a lot of times that there are certain people that should not be in here and they will, they will buy a house and whoever's selling it, not saying she did it, but some people want the house sold so bad that they want, they want to disclose everything. And that's not just here, it's everywhere. I bought a house in, in Winston-Salem, North Carolina about, I'm gonna say about ten years ago. And they did not disclose to me that there was an assessment against the HOA for like, oh, I don't know, it's probably like close to four thousand dollars because it was like, um, that it was gonna be done in three payments. One of them was, first one was like three hundred and fifty-seven dollars. The second was go, was almost four thousand dollars and the third one's gonna be about five hundred and some dollars. And it was all because the state come in and said that there was a, a pond, a retention pond. And they said the drainage pipe was not, not wide enough diameter. Well, the homeowner did not disclose it to the real estate agent that there was an assessment there. And that was how it got solved. A lot of them did it like that. So, it's just not, it's not just here. It's like people want a house sold so bad, they will not tell you, sometimes they will not tell you what's wrong with it. If it needs new floor in it, if their condition's giving them problems, they'll just not disclose that, cause they wanna get rid of it as soon as possible. And that's what happens. And I've seen it down here where, uh, we have people that, in here that's actually inherited the house from their mother or father and the, the child will not pass their background check and notice it already. But what can you do? The only way you can do is like they saw, said, was if they try to go get the barcode or they get tired going through the, the visitor's gate.
But this one here, it has sold by owner. On, right on, in the window, if you hear the phone number, go like... Uh, to me, when I see sold by owner, I see a red flag. Because first of all, when you sell by owner, I don't care, especially when they don't live here. If basically they don't know the rules here. So, but if somebody come out of state coming to buy the place and they buy it from an owner, uh, I think just a lot of red flags come up.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'd say where we're going with that was they're selling the house, they put the sun in the window cause it's trying to save the money from paying the commission to the real estate people. I see what they're doing. They're trying to get as much money for it as they can.
That's right.
So they won't tell prospective buyers what they're supposed to do, like supposed to get a background check. The only way we'll know it is once a person moves in and we see that they moved in, then we can walk, be knowing, am I correct on saying we're usually finding the UPL number, cause they gotta... what we're doing, am I correct on saying we're usually finding the UPL number, because they gotta produce it, so, yeah, that's where it comes from. They get fined later for that, for not having a background check.
But before we get that far down the process, once we see that in the window, the way that we can kind of, uh, make sure the process is followed, like, uh, yeah, see if we can check it.
Yeah, we'll have to write down that, we'll probably have to write down where the house is at and everything and.
Sold, yes.
Okay.
They won't, they won't be able to pass it until the background check comes back.
Yeah, I'll look at that, because we've got one that we had earlier this year, uh, a gentleman bought from, like, um, he lived over in Wichita, watching, and he never got a background check done. And then he sold it to somebody else. Yeah, we find him, and then I guess eventually got one like a month and a half later or something like that. That'd be something we need to take, you know, okay, next question?
Sandy Combs, unit four. My question is regarding Gil's question, why is it code enforcement rides through doing their business? If they see a for sale by owner in the window, why can't they write down the address and it goes to the office? That will alleviate all this, won't it?
Okay, that, that's something when you look at, too, maybe they can write it down and, and call the owner, like their, like for information, and they tell the owner that, remember, you have to tell who, prospective buyers that you need a background check. That can work. Anybody else got a question?
And I think that's a, that's a great idea, and, and that's why, you know, even when Vince talked about, let's look at the process, it's something that doesn't come up very often, but now that we're aware of it, but usually it's from, it's from neighbors that will tell us.
Yeah.
Yes, you're telling us now.
Okay, I'll, I'll look into that when we get back down there. And believe me, I will look, now that it's on my mind, I'll look into it, and that's, that's exactly what I do. So if anybody tells me anything, I'll look into it. Uh, I've got an open door policy, I don't care who it is, if I'm not in a meeting, I'll take the conversation, you know, I'll talk with them. Um, all the time, and I actually, if they got a problem at the RV compound, like Gil knows, I'll even run out there, see if we can't get in. Um, let's see, what else I've got here? Um, got any more questions over on line?
Nope.
Okay, um.
Hey, Jerry. Beans, Beans at our, Beans at our year-end audit is so late.
Jerry, Beans at our year-end report is so late, is the auditor prepared to come onsite and make their formal presentation like they have done in the past? And if so, when are the booklets gonna be available to the membership?
Okay, um, yesterday, well, I had the book, I've had the book for about, I got it early this week. And then he sent the, um, U drive over to Lynn yesterday to make changes in the computer. So I've actually got, we won't have the final draft till, probably one day next week, we'll have the book, we have the booklet out now. That question I have to ask, that they'll, if they're gonna come onsite. I mean, there is a big booklet where they say that they had no problems whatsoever with this thing, getting the information once Lynn found that, uh, where we found that, that file that said, didn't say fixed assets, only it said something else, and that might got missed. Uh, at first, and we did not get the, get the, because some stuff is so, was done so long ago that you don't have like a fixed schedule of like, when, uh, things were bought, like, you know, we might, Vince might know when the chairs were bought and things like that, but, um, they don't have it like it's generically, so I'm checking on that, too. Uh, I do know the taxes were paid on us, and the taxes were probably two thou, I think it's two thousand two hundred and six dollars. Uh, and everything, so I signed up on that, and, um, let's see, trying to think of anything else we got, um. I won't, like I said, I won't, it's hard for me to talk about that, because I ain't got the fin, exactly the final copy of that on, next Thursday. Yeah, but I'm definitely gonna, probably have the final, um, I wanna verify this exactly right on this last page by Tuesday. So I probably will say something on a Tuesday at the board meeting. So, um, let's see, I can't think of anything else right now, um, all right, come on up.
Just one more question, Jerry. Beans Masters and Masters has disappeared basically off the planet. Have we started reaching out to other accounting firms? Or are we going to enter into a contract with the one that's sort of pitch hitting for us?
Yes, I have, this one right here, the one that did, this one, uh, has been really good about things. Um, I feel like we, we should use them, because I know where we're at right now, know what to do. And, um, um, that's my opinion, I think we should use it, use them. Uh, yeah, you're right, Master Mass has disappeared off the planet. Um, let's see, I don't have any more this, this afternoon, uh, just trying to give you a little updates on stuff, and, yeah, he's got a question, boy.
Just quickly, Jerry.
Okay.
Uh, concerning, my, I'm, we got a green light.
The green light says you're on, okay. Uh, concerning the RV compound, and I think that, uh, that I, I wrote down on October the ninth, there's gonna be a walkthrough.
Well, I don't know, I can't remember that exact date, so as Vince said, that's on, that's on Saturday. So I think Carol has the dates down, but I don't think it's gonna be the ninth, because that ninth, it's not gonna be a Saturday, it's probably gonna be a, uh, Tuesday or Wednesday during the week.
How, how soon do you think you would know for sure? Because I, I wanna get involved with that, and that kind of leads to my next question. Uh, is there a list for residents waiting for a lot?
Yes, yes, there is. There, there is a list, um, how it's done is, when I look on the map, the map RV compound has different sized spaces. There is some spaces that are sixty, seven feet long, and usually that's usually a class A. Then there are some that's in the fifties, that's usually, uh, short, class A with maybe, uh, a trailer they pull behind it, and things like that. And then there are some spots that are only like fifteen, twenty feet long, am I right? I'm right on that, Gil? And then there are some spots that's thirty. So it's not really based, if you've got something that's like forty feet or longer, it's hard to get a spot, because there's not that many over that length, so they very rarely come open. So I think this year we're gonna have like, I'm gonna say, I think just two spots that have opened above the forty foot mark. And then the ones that are thirty to forty foot, there may be like ten of those, and I think there was like, I won't say like three or four in the range of twenty to twenty-five feet. And then there was like eight or ten that was, um, the smaller ones, which was the utility trailers. That's about, yeah. And that's what I got now, that's what we got now, we got like, like four spots, I think is open, that is less than fif, less than ten feet, and that's around the, the, it's in the forties. I think one of them is slot sixty-one, and one is fifty and fifty-one. And where they're located, it has to be a short one, because the one that's side to what, is at an angle, where you cannot get it out, so that's what's that. But, um, um, if, most of the list of people waiting for the, for the RV compound, the majority of them are, or they put in their application back in, in April to now. So most everybody that has put it in before April has a spot, unless it is something real small, because you don't wanna put like a fifteen foot trailer in a, well, I don't, I don't have any, but you don't wanna put a fifteen foot trailer in a sixty foot spot. So, go ahead, can you ask me?
Thank, thank you, and I agree a hundred percent with what you described, and I was aware that you're gonna, just so it makes more sense. I mean, and it should make sense. I guess what I'm concerned with, I'm gonna cut to the chase, there was some confusing, confusion as to the authority of control of the RV compound for a while. Prior to that confusion, I put my name on the list. During that confusion, I don't know where I ended up at. And so I, I guess I wanna know, where's the list, who has it? How do I find out if I'm even on that list? And I'm on many, many lists, believe me.
Okay, um, most time when people put in, they fill out that paper that was like, uh, has a name, address, he just says, I'm looking for a spot, like, down to the bottom, they write on there, or Carol write on there, I'm looking for a spot that's forty feet long. Uh, if you, say, for example, you filled this thing out last year, if, um, if it's a forty foot spot, and you've been asking for this, and I think, you know, I'd be glad to look and see when the first one comes out, because you've been waiting for your, are you there?
Much, much, much longer than April, and I'm gonna say a year, and I'm gonna be conservative.
Okay, I've looked at all those in that folder, and my question is, the biggest problem that we've had is when, is when like, when the RV compound was disbanded, the committee was disbanded, and Gil knows it. Uh, a lot of stuff that they, the board had at that time, because I was not on the board, some of that stuff got, got thrown everywhere, I'll be honest with you. And I can't tell you a word, if you had an application in that was days of last year, I would have seen it now. Because I've been looking after, boy, Gil.
One thing that people gotta understand is that you buy a house again, and somebody has something in a V-Cop at the time, that a V-Cop, uh, site don't automatically go with the house when it's sold. But some people think that because I, they were in lot sixty-two, for instance, and all of a sudden, they're, oh, this is my lot now. No, that doesn't work that way.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't work that way, and that's what we ran into, um, that's why the, I'm working with the RV compound, uh, about that situation, because what we've seen, what I've seen, is that, like Gil said, when people sell their house, they sell, they, they say that they're selling the RV lot with them, and it's not, it don't go with them. So we found stuff in here, we're trying to get that stuff taken care of, and I will have those trailers removed that did not belong to that spot. Like, I, I use the example, we had, we had a pontoon boat that was put in the RV compound. The person sold the house and said they had sold the lot, said they had a lot so and so. So the person that bought the house put the, put the pontoon boat in the spot. However, they never changed the registration on the RV, on the boat. The boat still had an address from Spring Hill. So, so that took a mess to get that straightened out. But usually, the reason you have walkthroughs and stuff is to find where those trailers and the tags don't match what's on the paperwork and that kind of thing. And we do have a lot that, I'll be honest with you, they have like, they realize they've not had an RV compound committee since January. What's happened is people will ride down through there, and they'll think that, okay, there's always empty spots down there. And what they'll do is, instead of checking with the office, see what the procedure is, they'll just bring a RV in there and park it. And then, and that, that has happened a lot. Like I found a car dealer tag in there, a car hauler in there, that I know's not used for anything, but it's sitting, sitting against the fence, and then some people will get assigned a spot. And as we know, it's supposed to be in their left-hand mirror when they back up, right? And instead, they pull in the spot. So the number, where they're thinking, if they pull in the spot, the number to the, on the stop is over here, when reality is, it was supposed to be on the other side of that stop. And that gets, that gets confusion too with them, so, um.
I just wanna say one thing, um, well, a couple of things. Um, everybody, I had three people come to me, um, about a month ago, and gave me their names, about, there was three of you that had been waiting. I do know when I went through them, that all three of, all three of the names were in, were in their pile of stuff. And I know that they were, that they're trying to get everybody's. So anybody who gave me their name, I know there was you, and there was a couple of others. So I know that they were in the list for them to do. The other thing I just wanted to let you know is that, with all the confusion what Jerry was just talking about with the previous stuff, that Jerry and Carol, the GM, took it all on, and it took them, oh goodness, a couple of months to figure out what had been done before and straighten it out. And then, as he said, then they, then they went down to the compound, they spent a lot of time on this, days, and that's when they were seeing that people were just putting their, you know, their spots, you know, their, their things wherever they wanted. So I, you know, we need to really applaud Jerry and Carol, because they worked really hard for about three months trying to do this. And I would come in, there would be papers all over the place, and they would have, okay, these are sixty footers, these are forty footers. I mean, and they just, I mean, so they are really, really trying. I just wanted you to be aware that anybody who gave me their names, we definitely have them, and if you have any questions, Jerry and Carol are the contact people.
But you, you're welcome, come, come down to the office and, uh, if, if I don't have one filled out, fill one another one out for me, I'll look at that. Yeah. So, has anybody else got any question about anything? Yeah, right here.
Hi, uh, I was wondering, is there a way to put something in the news and views about these RV situations?
Yeah, there, there is, I put out an email blast, and I can do that, or just put one in there.
Situation right now, my lawn lady's quitting. She sold her business, and she's got two trailers in there. And I'm sure, because I'm sitting here with the guy that's buying her business, like, he's gonna park it that trailer right there.
Okay, yeah, I need to know, I need to know about that, because it don't go, it doesn't work that way. Yeah.
Uh, I got a, got a, uh, thank you from, uh, Brendan McMahon for, thanks for everything you're doing, Jerry. We appreciate your transcendence through the membership. And I don't know what Sandy Goose, uh, means, but I need mics, I don't know what that means. Oh, maybe mic's out in the audience.
Well, that was, that was one of the goals, was, was to try to give you as much information I could at these town hall meetings about things, and like, um, when you hear something different at, at a board meeting, uh, it's the best way to clear it up, or the smartest thing to do is call me. Don't listen to the rumors, call me, and I'll, I'll be glad to show you the paperwork, paperwork, whatever it is. Uh, that's one thing I don't have, have a problem with, is like, if you ask me something, um, like, it doesn't matter whether it's at the office or whatever, if I can find it out, I'll find it out. So like, it's easy for me to say to you, if, um, I always believed when I was running not to hide nothing anyway, because what affects you affects me. So, uh, and that's just the way it is, it's not like to, you know, I don't, as Gil knows, or Carol knows, or even Vince knows, I don't want people to call me like Mr. President or anything, it's not like, me, I'm just a regular resident that's trying to do, you know, trying to do what's right and run things right. you know, trying to do what's right and run things right. So uh, um, I appreciate, I appreciate that. So uh, um, to me, this is not a popularity contest. This is like um, to make sure you got the right information so you can make the, make the right decision. And uh, we're talking about the RV compound. What I'd love to see, and I, it may not happen in the next little bit, but I would love to see all the boats in one section, all the landscaping trailers in one section, like the small trailers. Then the, the, like along that fence line, I'd like to see all class Cs down that side or all the little small bunkers down there together. And all of them like, say, so when it's easy to do with the walkthrough, you'll say, all five hundreds are boats. Okay, you'd say, you get on there and it'd be easy to spot if a trailer's not supposed to be there, you know? That'd be some, that'd be fantastic if it was that way. But I know it's not gonna work that way. That's just kinda like a bike dream. Because we know people's got big RVs, they pull boats behind or they pull um, um, cargo trailers behind. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, one thing is that we had started, basically we're just saying.
Yeah.
And there are some stuff in there that does not work and it, and needs to have actions done on it. For a couple of years now, nothing's done enough. Now white van on one side, uh, that, that trailer, that uh, the commercial trailer that has dealer plates on it in uh, lot twenty-five, that needs to be attended to. There's another one that's a dead one, forty-two. I know about this stuff and I'm willing to help.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's gonna be the main goal was like, stuff like that is like, I would much rather, um, I don't mind people having spots, but I do mind where they, where they like, keep somebody that, that needs a spot and they don't like, like you said, that one right there is a prime example. And that's twenty-five by the way, that's correct, because that's the one I'm looking at. Uh, is if they got violations down there, I'm, I'm willing to take your violations. Okay, that's one I wanna look at too because that's on my radar to like, find out who owns it and if it's supposed to be in there, tell them. Okay. Alright, if anybody doesn't have any questions, anybody have a que- yeah, right here.
Well, I can say, Jerry, prior to this, when all that stuff broke through last spring, we were in the process of going through the RV lot and making, we were turning on different things going on.
Hmm.
We were talking about if we needed, we would take care of the lawn. And then Mark asked the whole bit.
Well.
Come back to ask someone to go back up. I won't use the finger that they gave, gave Mark, like they said, you're asking the wrong guy, I can't fire the, the gun.
Yeah, I understand that. Well.
Trailer lot is seventy-seven. I had, I trailer parked somewhere, it was right across the street. I couldn't even get off. I had security come on him and he's telling me how to ride it. I said, well, go get, get the truck from the dump on it and you pull it out and see if you can spank, if you're gonna spank some hump, I'm hooked with it. He drove away and I never seen him again.
Well, you've got somebody different now. It's like, it's like, we are, it's totally different than when they was, they were on the board, I'm, they was president and things like that. We will look at those just like me and Gil move. I moved two trailers just the other week. Uh, yeah, with permission. Yeah, that's correct. And uh, to get the permission, they understand it better when like uh, like say, sometimes these people like, when they find out that they'll get any more information about, say, I'm the president of the HOA and they willing to, to do it, like give me permission, which, which they did that time. And that guy was real grateful for it and uh, everything. And the, like I said, the main thing is I want everything to run smooth. And somebody asked me what, why there's never a big crowd at town hall meetings? And I said, well, well, that tells me there's not that many problems. Because if there was that many problems, then the place will be packed and, you know, people will be complaining about, like say, great example was when the noodle thing came up last, earlier this year. There was a lot of people in here worrying about, well, how we was gonna do the noodle or what we was gonna do with it. So to me, I don't, like I said, I don't care if there's one person out here and there's maybe only one person online. If it's something they wanna know, I'm open to that. And I'm willing to give them that information. So I know Vince has gotta go. It's like almost three o'clock. And if anybody doesn't have any ques- any other question, um, I will leave it there then. I don't see any more questions.
Tuesday, right?
Yeah, Tues- Tuesday morning at the meeting is, Tuesday morning meeting is board meeting and uh, um, things like that. We should have some announcements be made then that's totally different. Uh, we'll have that information in more detail then. And I thank y'all for coming out today. And if you wanna ask me something in private, because you don't want other people to know, that's fine too. I'll stay around a few, stay around like ten or fifteen minute session. Alright, y'all have a good day.